Good evening and welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty four UConn Planning Commission meeting. We're gonna stand for the prayer and for the flags. Commissioner Geis will pray for us.
Father, we want to thank you for letting us all come here today. Thank you for this great country and this great city. Yes, you will be with those that need you right now. Thank you that you're a great comforter, great healer, our great God. I guess you give us wisdom tonight as we make decisions.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all. Jeff? Item number one, nope, pro call, actually, Danielle.
Jared Wright?
Yes.
Jeff Geis?
Here.
Craig Knuckles?
Yes.
Stephen Jones?
Yes.
Lee Clark?
Here.
Okay, item number one on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the October fourteenth regular scheduled meeting. You guys have a chance to take a look at over the minutes?
Yep. Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Item number two, is there any visitors in the audience today that would like to speak on a matter that is not an agenda item tonight? Okay, we'll move on to item number three, to hear requests by Premier, I Premier Homes LLC on behalf of Van Houten Properties LLC for a special use permit for short term rental at one oh six Cottonwood Drive. Anybody here to speak on that this evening? Yes, ma'am, please step up to the podium and tell us your name and your address, please.
Property at one oh six Cottonwood Drive. And we're applying for a short term rental property. We, the purpose of it is we manage to market towards corporate housing where companies are here for either projects like working at Hobby Lobby, air blade replacements such as that, also families and who have moved away and have come back and to attend special events such as weddings or funerals and things like that. And then the other part is we work with displaced families to, who are displaced due to fire or tornadoes or, or house renovation or they closed their house too soon. So those are the three type of people that we market with.
Do you have a stay minimum? Like a nightly stay?
It's one night during the weekday and then on the weekends it's a minimum of two. We do have quiet, quiet, quiet hours established, which is ten PM and eight, eight AM. So we adhere to all of the rules and regulations set forth by the ordinance that the city of UConn have placed.
Thank you. Do we have any feedback from any neighbors on this property?
On this particular one, we did not.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Is anybody else in the, the audience that'd like to speak on this matter? Yes, sir, please step up, state your name and your address, please.
My name's Mike Burris, I live at three hundred East Platt Drive. I'm really just trying to make sure you guys are aware that one oh six Cottonwood Drive is actually three doors from Spanish Cove. And given the fact that we haven't really done anything about, you know, light intrusion issues like that. I know you guys have put processes in place to address Airbnb issues, but, you know, light trespass could be an issue and that's a whole facility full of seniors that, that could be affected by that. And if you, I have a picture of the way it sits, if you guys want to see it. If, I'm sure you're probably aware anyway, so.
I think we've got, I think we've got that.
Yeah, we've got it.
We've got, we've got an aerial.
Yeah, and, and so if you've got an aerial, you can see on that one street there on Cottonwood Drive. It's only the third house back from the intersection. I, I understand what's going on, but, but, but man, if he had the lights that we have in the back of our house shining on the back of Spanish Cove, I hope they'll have the opportunity to come forward and oppose it. I haven't, I haven't heard from them. I don't want to lead you to believe that they oppose it. But we got our letter telling us in time that I was able to go out and make the people all around me. Hoping, I don't, I don't know if Spanish Cove got that letter. Do, do they get the same?
It's within the area.
Anything that's within six hundred feet of the property line get, did get notified.
So, so Spanish Cove would have been notified. So I don't know what their timelines are when they can go out, knock doors. But obviously they could get a whole apartment complex at one time if they chose to. So, but anyway, just let it, it's awful close to the senior center. Wish you'd oppose putting an Airbnb next door to the senior center, so.
Thank you, Mike. Do you guys have any discussion, anything else I wanted to speak about?
Just a quick question as far as, if I can ask.
Yes, sir.
Question, sorry. So just as far as for that goes, you guys aren't, are you planning on placing any extra lighting other than what's already on?
No, sir, and, and also the way that, that house is actually positioned, it's north and south. And so we would have to have like a huge gigantic spotlight to be able to spot it on there. Like it would be like a Batman, you know, cut deal. And so, no, there's, there's nothing in it, face north and south, so it's actually parallel with the Spanish Cove.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alrighty.
So this was kind of spelled out new for us this time on the recommendations. Do we, we still, I mean, still, you know, keep a nomination a second and then in a vote, right? We just, you just listed three options that we would have in front of us, okay?
What, what additional information? Mitchell, can you speak, or Danielle, can you speak to the additional information required? It says on our, on one of our options that we could push it to another meeting before we have some additional information.
Right, so in order to defer an item or to have it taken to another agenda, typically, if there's information that we are still needing to complete the agenda item or if there's further questions that were, that are not able to be answered at the meeting, those are a couple of reasons why you'd want to defer it. Roger can jump in if I'm missing anything, but those are the two main ones I've dealt with.
And there's, is there anything incomplete in this application?
No, no, the application's complete and everything else and the inspection's finished. We're just waiting on, or sorry, the, the items from the inspection has been finished. We're just waiting on the inspection to be completed.
I'll, I'll make a motion. The Planning Commission, oh, let's see, I'm sorry. And the.
So we don't have it to read on this, since I think we just make a motion to approve and then, and then I can second that. And then we call the vote, right?
Correct, yes, if you have, you can do the motion to approve, deny, and then if there's any other conditions, you can certainly add that in there. Otherwise, then yes, it'd be just like your normal process, it's just not spelled out for you this time.
That's okay, we just get used to that. You're trying to make us like be eloquent up here with our verbiage, so.
I, I make a recommendation to approve the special use permit of the subject property in the, to the conditions outlined in the municipal code and listed in the staff report above.
And I'll second that. Call the vote, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, good luck with your project. Item number four, to hear requests by A Real Home Away on behalf of Thomas and Pamela Robiner for a special use permit for a short term rental at four five one three Black Mesa. Is there somebody here to speak on that this evening? Please state your name and your address for us, sir.
Hi, my name is Cade Burleson with A Real Home Away, representing Pam and Thomas Grobner at forty five thirteen Black Mesa. Just applying for a special use permit for a short term rental. And I can answer any questions if you guys have any.
One real quick question I had, when you guys purchased the property, did you guys happen to look through the HOA rules and regulations or the covenants for the?
Yeah, Pam and Thomas purchased the property, then hired us to manage it. And they were not aware of any covenants to restrict short term rentals.
Just, but you did, y'all did read the HOA and, and still thought that there was no problem, is that clarification?
Correct.
Okay. I did a question for Roger. So you've got a copy of the HOA?
I, I do.
So that section, that number eight, it says no business. Does that affect, is it really a business as?
Well, there, it's, in the sense that they're conducting a business out of the site, yes, it is. But the covenants and restrictions are not something that the city can or does enforce.
Right.
And so that would be a question of fact, probably, to end up in district court if, if they go forward with it and the neighbors object and contend that it's a business, then a court would have to determine whether that is short term rental constitutes a business.
But it, would it be safe to assume, and I know that's a dangerous word, that the HOA people would believe that that constitute a violation of the HOA?
Yeah, I want to be careful and give, give an opinion on that, but it, I mean, it, it is a business type use, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I would like to see more of our covenants, you know, updated. Because so many, so many of these covenants have been copied and pasted over the years that, ten years ago, when this developer started developing property, you know, business wasn't, the business was different then than it is now. And.
We'll get to the other folks.
Yeah. And we can talk about that in a little bit, but that was kind of my feelings on the whole, the whole business thing is, you know, where, where does it stop being a business as you're doing Facebook Marketplace deals in your driveway versus a short term rental, so. We can talk about that. I'm not here to argue, I'm just here to present my opinion.
That's good. Will we open it up to any other folks in the audience, you guys have any other questions for him?
I don't, well, we'll, we'll probably come back to you, Cade.
Come back. Does anybody else here want to speak on this? Yes, sir, Mike. Go with her first, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Shelley Jones and I'm a homeowner in River Mesa. I purchased my home seven years ago. And when I was considering purchasing, purchasing a home in UConn, I've lived in Western Oklahoma and I was moving from there. One of the stipulations that I was looking for was to purchase a home in a neighborhood that had no rentals. And that's why this appealed to me at the time. When I looked at the HOAs, it specifically states that they're supposed to be single family homeowner dwellings. And a home, as you know, is not a cheap purchase. And I plan on being there probably the rest of my life. And so I just, and then you all brought up the business part of it. It does state in our HOA and my concern now of hearing you all is every homeowner that purchases a home gets this HOA, so we can read it. And if we go against what is in this HOA, we can go to court. So I want to make clear that this is what it is right now and it is what I thought it was going to be when I purchased my home. And I would appreciate it if we stuck with it. And I hope the council will consider this. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Burris, three hundred East Platt Drive. If you look at the picture of it from above right now, I printed it out right before I left. I'm not sure all of the houses across the street from the property on Black Mesa are still being built.
Yeah.
But there is construction there. There was a lady actually over here by the Sunset Amphitheater thing that had her house sold. And when the buyer, you know, was, she was online with the guy, oh yeah, I'm coming to buy it. And he came and looked and he said that amphitheater is going to be over there. She said, yeah, and he said, that's okay, thank you, and left. And I'm just saying, you don't, I, I'm betting if the builder that's building those houses across the street, if he's, if he is not here, it's because he didn't know he needed to be.
The developer?
I, I, it was pretty easy for me. I didn't have any difficulty knocking all the doors and getting people to sign it. Everybody that signed said, no, I don't want to live next door to a hotel. I want to live, Airbnb is the same, as far as we're concerned, so. But anyway, I have got a picture of it if you guys want that, but you guys got phones too, so you can look at it and see that, that it is, there is new construction all around it, it's going to be impacted by this. The other issue is the same thing as I was saying, and, and, you know, I don't want to dog you too much on the lights, but we're still dealing with that issue three years down the road. And, and it's still a, an issue at my house, I can take more pictures, but you guys have seen plenty of them. So anyway, if you want the picture of the way the lot sits, it's.
Got to hear you. Okay, awesome, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mike.
Go ahead, please step up here.
Hi, Louis Tricosi, forty five sixteen Black Mesa Lane. My, my family's here and we got that notice in the mail and it was, it's starting to kind of see that that was something that might take place. As far as I can tell, as of recently, it has been acting as a rental. We live directly across from the property and every week there's a new car there with new people there. And having a young child now, obviously that whole safety and security thing is kind of in the forefront of my mind. And it's just hardening to know, like, I don't know who's there across the street. I don't know who's supposed to be there, I don't know what cars are supposed to be there, so if they park right in front of my house, I don't really know who's, who's there, who shouldn't be there and so on. So that's just kind of, I just want to give my thoughts on that and I hope that the council will take that into consideration. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kim Hartman and I live in the same addition that we're speaking of. My husband and I bought our house in about a year and a half ago. And you spoke about the covenants being revised and I agree, they need to be updated. But what's happening is, the lady that spoke a while ago, she bought her house so many years ago, but we are in the newer addition, the newer part of this. And we're talking about homes that are starting from three hundred and thirty two thousand to three hundred and ten thousand that are being sold in that area. And they're still building. My, my, I live on the backside of this residence that we're talking about. And I agree with the gentleman that just got through talking, that has been rented out ever since we have been in our home. There's people in and out of there, different people, matter of fact, a new one just moved in on the seventh of November, which leads me to another question that I have. Danielle had sent me some ordinance of the fine schedule. My question is, who oversees and enforces the violations?
City's supposed to be.
Yes, it'll be code enforcement and the police department work together. How do you do that? I mean, how do you?
It's usually complaint driven. As far as if there's a complaint saying that, that we believe this is occurring or if there's an issue, then people generally will call in and then the city will investigate.
So it'd be basically by the neighbors, correct? Okay, just wondering because I know there is a list of fines operation for short term rental prior to having the special permit. First violation, second violation, third violation, and that was my question, wondering how this is enforced. Another thing is that we talked about it and I do have a copy of the covenants, the one we stated. Someone stated, I think on page three, number eight. No business, trade, or activity shall be carried on upon the residential lot except that of a builder's, excuse me, model home or temporary office. A short term rental is a business, whether it's short term or long term. It is a business because they get income and they're self-employed. And they do have to pay taxes unless it is wrapped in an LLC, that's my understanding. And also they have to have regulations which their need to, a rental license. And then they have this responsibility of the lot. And my question would be also to this gentleman, is this a business where you have multiple Airbnbs?
Just please.
I mean, A Real Home Away is a property management company and we do have multiple Airbnbs.
Thank you.
The street I live on, like I said, is behind the proposed Airbnb. And they're still building houses, so this is a new addition. I think there's seventeen houses in the cul-de-sac that we're talking about on this one. And I know there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight more houses to be built on my street.
You live on Adobe Court?
Yes, I do, I live in forty five twenty Adobe Court. And so that's just adjacent here and so that's why I know there's been different people, like this other gentleman that spoke about that in and out since summer. And so I ask you to oppose the short term rental location, thank you.
Thank you. You know, there's that discussion, guys? I'm out of water.
I mean, I'll just, for me, I mean, I know that these are not, again, HOA is not a law that the city of UConn is, but I do know that they are a contract between the buyers and the rest of the HOA. And so while I know I can't, this is just my, my, my hesitation to approve in the, in situations like this is because while that's not for us to enforce, it is something that I know that this, that the citizens or residents then could go spend their money and their time fighting later on. And part of our job up here, I feel like, or at least the way I've interpreted or read it, is that we are to protect the interests of the city and the betterment of the city and of the citizens of the city. And so for me, I can't see making a decision where I know it's going to force citizens to go spend money and their time on something that was signed in a contract that they will prob, you know, could or could not win in court, and that's not for me to side, but I just, that's my hesitation on, on things like this.
And I'm with you as well, I mean, there's, there's bylaws of being in the neighborhood and conditions to building and buying and, and, and living there. And, and I struggle with approving this because of that.
And a difference between this and regular rental is that this short term requires a permit to have from the city. So it's recognition of it as a business type of thing with a business permit in the city. So that's where.
Yeah, sure.
I'm just to respond to a couple of things that were brought up. We were notified, I believe, early summer, I think by Danielle, about the need for a permit. And at that time, we, it has been operating as a midterm to long term rental, so we have not been using it as a short term rental. And we do work with a lot of insurance companies, as well as traveling nurses, people who have just been displaced from homes. It is not like our desire to really even have it as a short term rental, but we want to, if we can't get a midterm or long term, you know, we want to be in compliance, which is why we applied for it. And I would just ask that you would allow, I mean, you're not making a judgment on the, on the HOA here tonight, but you allow that to take place where it needs to take place. Thank you.
Have they satisfied all other requirements of the, for the permit as far as a short term?
Yes.
As far as like what's in our code?
Yes, thus far they have. And then the last piece, should it get approved by council, we'll be getting the short term rental license. And that, that will come at the last step, but yes, everything has been completed so far.
Mike Burris, three hundred East Platt. We're already losing Otis, Otis is moving out of UConn because of the trouble with short term rentals. We need to protect our people, not the people who are putting short term rentals in.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm kind of, going to reiterate what he just said, we need to protect our people that live in this town, not out of state people that want to rent properties around the homeowners.
Anything else?
So I, I just want to be clear on your position, Cade, that if we don't approve for a short term rental, the properties could still be rented as midterm or long term rental. And we're kind of right back where we started from.
Well, at that point, it, it falls back on HOA to take it, it's not for us to determine if it should go long term, right? I mean, that's falling back on their, their community to enforce that or not.
Okay.
Am I right? Yeah, I think so. Because either way, they're both considered a business, so whether one needs a permit or not, then we're kind of in a bad spot. We're just talking about the piece of short term because it's a, right? Or it's, it needs a special use. Or it's, it needs a special use. You have a motion?
I have a motion to decline. For the, the reasons of the terms and conditions of the HOA on Mason.
Short-term rental. Have a motion on the table in a second. Hold the roll, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Clark?
Yes.
Good luck to you. All right. Item number five, item number five, tier requests by CPI Pipe and Steel Incorporated for a planned unit development at 16544 West Highway 66. Who's here to speak on that today? Yes, sir.
Good evening, George Marquez with Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4700 Galardia Parkway in Oklahoma City. I am here representing CPI Pipe and Steel, this PUD. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
So looks like you guys are already there.
Yes.
Like, there's already a business there, and that's all working, and everybody's...
Yes, sir.
Doing their thing, yeah.
Yes.
And we're just looking to expand or put in some roads?
So there's going to be a new structure that's going to be erected on the property. And so in the main purpose of this PUD is to basically allow gravel surfaces for storage and lay-down areas, access roads and driveways on the property.
Okay.
Will there be access to this, this new property? Because I drove it, and if I'm, if I remember right, the current CPI yard's got a fence in between this and this other property. Am I correct? Like where the oil rig and all that was?
Dale Dorsey, 15129 Northwest 23rd Street. Yeah, there is a, so all the property is owned by the same, the same owner. But yes, there is a fence. And right now, it's a barbed wire fence, it'll be a chain-link fence in the future. But yeah, there is a fence.
Do you plan to have access, road access, from your current CPI yard to this new yard? Or will it all be off Gregory?
It'll all be off Gregory.
Okay, perfect. You going to sweet-talk the state to rebuild Gregory? It's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, that's not going to...
Yeah. It's like, we'll do all this work, you guys redo the road for us.
We've asked, we've been told now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just drove down that, too. Got a great massage. Awful.
I don't drive a truck, so I had to turn around or I was going to get stuck.
Is this a good time to talk about the recommendation for like a paved surface off of 66? So we've had, we had a suggestion to pave the drive off of 66 to the property around 250 feet in to help eliminate some of the dust control from the truck, big trucks going in and out. So I saw that letter. So where our entrance is at and where he's at, he's further east. So I'm thinking, what he's thinking is the development next to us that we're doing in the unincorporated area, which as soon as we're done with that, that will, that road will be asphalt. But I would have to get with the owner on the getting a 250-foot paved into CPI.
So there's another piece of property you're developing that we're not talking about here? And that's what you think the entrance is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because his property, so our entrance, he's further west of our entrance. So I think he's talking about that property.
This is the property you're working on on the north side of the road?
No, it's on the west side of CPI, unincorporated.
I know, and it's, you've got a footing and all that being built? I know what you're talking about, yeah, okay. That makes sense. You will pave that one. That's what you're saying, you'll asphalt it after you're done?
It'll have asphalt millings, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll still be gravel yards, but the driveway will be asphalt.
Facing the street. A lot of those properties have asphalt drives, yeah.
Okay. Good information. And he also did mention that letter about doing a turning lane or whatever. I have got with DOT in the past about doing another crossover. Because there's multiple businesses that use that same crossover. And DOT said they would not add another one. Because they're, it would be too close together with the other ones. Got you. So, because there's like four businesses right there that all use that crossover. Same crossover, yeah. Yeah. I got you. Okay.
All right, anything else, you guys?
So I mentioned a concern about lighting out there from commercial and industrial to residential. How do you guys plan on lighting that, that area? Is that, is that just floodlights flooding the...
Sightlighting will meet our current ordinances with the city. So there wouldn't be any like spilled light going onto the neighbor's property.
Cool.
Just want to open it up for discussion, you all good?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that came to speak on this today? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I can make a motion if you'd like. Consider the findings one through eight on other information provided herein. Staff recommends this application be recommended for approval. In the case of one through two PUD application by Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated on behalf of CPI Pipe and Steel Incorporated, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report and move to this item be recommended for approval.
Second. Hold the roll, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
All right, don't go anywhere, we got one more for you. All right, item number six this evening, tier request by CPI and Steel Incorporated for a preliminary plat at 16544 West Highway 66.
Mr. George? Yep, George Marquez, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4700 Galardia Parkway. So this is just a preliminary plat. It is currently unplanted land, and the owner wishes to kind of subdivide that into lots. Happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
More formality that it comes along with it, so... You good, gentlemen? Okay, do you have a motion?
In the case of the preliminary plat, application by Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated on behalf of CPI Pipe and Steel Incorporated, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval.
Second. Call the vote, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven, is there any new business this evening for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, open discussion, you guys got any?
I'd just like to say that all the citizens that came out to voice your concerns and support, truly appreciate you coming out and taking the time to do so.
Absolutely, thank you.
A reminder, Christmas in the parks about to start in a couple of weeks. So, yeah, it's exciting. Thank you, sir. Yeah, and thank, we got our new city manager showed up tonight to see us. So appreciate you coming by. All right, if you don't have anything else, we got our next meeting on December the 9th, 2024.